Meeting of the Board of Selectmen on Tuesday, April 14th. Mr. Fox, Mr. Mogul, Mr. Didi, and Mr. Steinhardt in attendance. I believe Sandra is also going to be here too. For guests, so Doug is doing the recording now.
All right. Good evening. It's Tuesday, April 14th, 2020. Let me read the following. Pursuit to Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020, orders suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, general law, Chapter 30A, 18, and the governor's March 15th, 2020, order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place. This meeting of the Town of Southwick Select Board is being conducted both at Town Hall and via remote participation by some members. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceeding as provided for in the order. Despite our best efforts, sometimes we are not able to provide for real-time access, and we'll post a record of the meeting on the town's website as soon as we are able. With that, if we could all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. Mr. Steinhardt, I see the first thing that we're discussing are COVID-19 action items.
Right, as you see, the first item is the governor had made a request through the state Executive Office of Public Safety for each town to be able to use each town's reverse 911 system. In our community, that's called Code Red. In other communities, they use different vendors. So that was facilitated by a request to the chief of police. And I discussed it, and he asked me to speak to the chairperson. So Mr. Fox did okay that because I believe that is one of the ways that the governor needs to be able to get messages out to communities if people aren't watching the briefings. So that was just something that the chairman did. I'm not necessarily sure that it necessitates a vote by the board, but it was something that was.
All right, I hope everybody was in agreement with that. I see nodding. Okay, that's good. We're in agreement with that one. Next, Mr. Steinhardt?
Okay, obviously, right now, we're working under the governor's emergency declaration, which temporarily modified the open meeting law, which is administered through the Attorney General's office. And that allows for the remote participation that we are all conducting with each other right now. And what's going to happen is when his declaration ends, our ability to do this process, and we did not have some other form of it, which is a minor form already in place earlier. So I'm just making sure the board knows that. The board does have the ability in the future to examine those AG office meeting guidelines and to adopt it in some manner or fashion. But you do not have that now as a standard course of business operations, but you could in the future. But just be aware that once this declaration ends, and I'm not sure when that's going to be. I mean, obviously, it won't be, I believe, any sooner than May 4th, when he's going to make his next decision about extending nonessential people staying home, as well as school system statuses and daycares and things of that nature. So it's not something we need to act on this evening, but it is something you'll have to think about going forward. It's also something that I've been discussing with people about the budget document. Our budget document through our Channel 15 operation that we've been putting money aside the last couple of years that's allowed us to commence the wiring of Town Hall under a wireless program setup like we have at Police and Fire. So that's underway within the next week. And the routers and all sorts of receivers and other devices will be put in. So that's going to help that. But then going forward, if we ever want to continue remote meetings or partially remote meetings with people not in the building, all of these technological items will have to be in play. And the next budget will also be continued those efforts in both an operational line item and in a capital.
Mr. Chairman, the, under the open meeting law modifications that were set forth a few years ago that allowed for remote participation, the only time you can have remote participation is if another member is unable to, if a member is physically unable to get to a meeting. If you are local and they're having a meeting, you have to attend it locally. So once this emergency declaration is over, it's kind of back to business as usual. But if someone were traveling or someone were ill and they didn't want to be around someone, then you could allow it. And then the other part is to what Carl talked about as far as the access piece is, you know, part of the wireless project and part of the Channel 15 project would be the ability to make meetings available online. And you could enable public participation, but even just to have it broadcast like on Channel 15 automatically or make it available online without having the public having to come down to Town Hall, for example, to have a meeting. But under the open meeting law, the way I read it, once this declaration is over, we can't just have a Zoom meeting and call it a Board of Selectmen's meeting. We would have to go to Town Hall and have that meeting. And even with remote participation, say, one of us was traveling and they wanted to dial into that meeting, they could. But the majority or the quorum would have to be at Town Hall.
Right, and you have to determine what boards would be, you know, allowed to do that.
But it's by the Board of Selectmen, their chief executive board makes that decision, but it's a budgetary one, right? If you allow it, for one, you kind of allow it from all. The only mechanism you would have to not allow it for all would be budgetary. So you say you wouldn't give a board a Zoom account, for example, in their budget so that they couldn't do it or something like that. But once you allow it for a board, you allow it for all boards in town, as I read the.
Right, well, there's a further piece of the clarification. Like you said, if you don't award the dollars to the entity to do it, then they can't do it.
Right. Okay, sorry.
All right, you've made good points. I think we're facing something right now where we can kind of put this off for the time being to do more research and see how things go with our Wi-Fi expansion at Town Hall and to look at how our budgets progress. So we want to just keep this on our active list, Carl.
Yep. Jim, and I know when we did the Pledge of Allegiance, one of the other things you generally like to do is to see if there's any public comments, sir.
I did notice that we had someone join us. So I will, at this time, allow public comments. It's anyone that is not on the agenda that would like to make a statement to the Select Board. This would be their opportunity to do that. We don't have back and forth, but it's just a person's opportunity to make a statement.
Doug would have to unmute them.
Right, we'd ask that if there was anybody that wants to do that, to please state their name and address. Is there anyone at this time that would like to make a public statement? I see, I see a no. All right, thank you. All right, next thing, Mr. Steinhardt?
Well, in the last day or so, we were fortunate enough to complication of an additional amount of funds that come through the state government to the local regional planning agencies. In our case, the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission is our regional planning agency. And the purpose of those funds is to help support the efforts of the Boards of Health. And so we already had an earlier grant from them around the $6,700 amount. And they have just sent in another check to us for $7,052. I can't figure out how they get these numbers. But 7,052 is the amount. And so we need to authorize the chair to sign Agreement Amendment Number One with the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission. Tell you how fast the money is. They hand-delivered the check to Town Hall today, and it's already been deposited.
All right, so I need a motion to accept.
Doug Mogul will make that motion.
Joe Didi, second.
All right, roll call vote, Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Mogul, aye.
Joe Didi, aye.
All right. Carl, can we make a suggestion to the Board of Health on utilizing some of this money to purchase PPE for our first responders?
Well, they have been doing that. Well, they've been supporting the efforts of the town nurse to have the appropriate equipment when she goes and visits people. And the first responders have been taken care of under separate applications that our Board of Health Director Candy Spencer has been filing. She does periodic requests to these other agencies, including NEMA. And they've already made deliveries of equipment to our Police and Fire. And then in addition to that, our chiefs have also been able to go out and procure things in other places. You know, as you well know, at one of your previous meetings, they also went and found housing if they needed for quarantine purposes for first responders.
Okay.
But so in the other thing I did talk to her about, Russ, was, you know, the types of masks that are available, the small dollar ones that will be available for staff in the future when we begin to phase out of this declaration and start having more people coming into the building.
Correct.
Well, as having Plexiglas stations, you know, distance requirements and then other measures that we need to do to protect the full staff of everybody that's going to be interacting with everybody coming through the doors. We may very well need some of the stuff when the special election comes up on May 19th. Because that's going to be your first big situation where people are coming into the building for the senator's vacancy election.
Okay, you might want to emphasize that to Tammy, our Board of Health Director, about that election and make sure that she's well aware of it and making any recommendations.
Yep.
I was just considering if we had additional PPE equipment because as we know that there's going to be light at the end of the tunnel eventually, but there's a concern of this coming back in the fall or winter. So I think, you know, if we had to put aside a stockpile for the future, if these are extra dollars available, that.
Well, that has been, that likelihood has already been discussed with her.
Okay.
That stockpile, and also, you know, one could envision, because these are not the high-end masks that you read about on TV.
Right.
These are the other types, and that those would be available. And if they needed to, they could be repurposed to other public safety agencies or other places in the future if they weren't needed. Because the issue with some of these things is they might have lifespans. So you really don't want to hang on to something that's going to go bad.
Yeah.
The same thing as not having it. So you might put it out there, give it to another municipality or another entity, have them use it before it goes bad. Because that was one of the big criticisms of some of the stockpile, the lifespan of the equipment.
Absolutely. All right, anything, our next item?
Okay, the next item is to just inform you that the staff last Saturday were working with Mr. Doug and Robin to do all the filing through the Massachusetts Emergency Management Agency to submit the required forms for FEMA to get us registered for public assistance in the future so that we'll be able to, you know, track our costs, our costs, to see what type of federal reimbursement may be there in the future, like we do for snowstorms.
Right.
This is quite a different issue because of the this being all 50 states at once and all areas in every 50 states. So the question is what type of money will be available? And then you'll have to examine what the eligibility criteria is. Because it may not be for everything we're tracking, but at least we'll have those costs in.
Yeah, I think we learned quite a bit in 2011. So that's, we have some experience dealing with situations like this.
Right, so that was all, that was the preliminary registration of us was filed last week, and you have a copy of that in your meeting materials.
Okay, thank you. All right, so we've covered that. So I will acknowledge payroll warrant number 2021 dated 4/13/2020 for $210,816.33. And then I need a motion to accept the minutes dated 4/7/2020?
I'll make that motion.
Joe Didi, second.
All right, do a roll call vote, Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Mogul, aye.
Joe Didi, aye.
I need a motion to accept the minutes of 4/9/2020?
I'll make a motion as amended because that meeting was Thursday, April 9th, not Tuesday, April 9th.
Okay, noted.
Joe Didi, second.
Roll call vote, Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Mogul, aye.
Joe Didi, aye.
unanimous. All right, we're going now to announce different meeting dates. Mr. Steinhardt has already referred to the special election for state senator, which is going to be on Tuesday, May 19. And then we have our own local elections on June, Tuesday, June 9th, and a special town meeting, annual town meeting on Tuesday, June 16th. So those are dates to remember.
And you already have a lot of those potential, those are recurring articles, both on the special and on the annual each year?
Correct.
Most of those, but there are certain things that are being worked on by town council now.
Right, I know there's several things that we've proposed to the community preservation that they're working on. And hopefully, we can get those all lined up.
I've asked Dennis, I've asked Dennis to work with Chris Pratt their meeting times so that they can hold their meetings remotely and start to make headway on getting all of those applications before them and take action on them.
Okay.
Get the okay on those, and then we will put them to form in the necessary town meeting articles.
Doug, did you have an opportunity to reach out to the Planning Board Chairman?
I've reached out twice, and I haven't heard back. I did speak with Mrs. Planning Board Chairman during the Finance Committee and told her if she happened to see her husband around, tell him I was looking for him. So I'll reach out to him again this evening.
Okay. All right, just to see if there's any articles that they might want to get in front of the voters. All right, with that, we will be going to old business. The first thing I have here is the Building Inspector interviews for, well, it says, okay, 4/21/2020, which would be next Tuesday?
That's correct.
Okay.
Leave the dress up, how's that work?
I don't think I fit in any of my old clothes anymore. This stay-at-home stuff is rough.
Like just a suit top, is that what you?
Yeah, yeah, you can even get one of those T-shirts with the, you know, you know.
All right, just want to make sure.
Just be careful for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Right.
I'll have a flag for next week, though. You'll be all set, Russ.
Julia is going to put it behind, so we will be set. We'll be set.
Now, just remember, next week, those meetings starts at 5:00. We're viewing three finalists for Building Inspector. We're fortunate that Arthur's still working for us. He's working remote, unless he's also in the field, and he's very busy. So we're fortunate he's here. And Doug and I and others were on that other preliminary screening committee. And we've forwarded on to you the best three candidates.
Good, good. Questions? Would you like each member of the board to submit two questions?
I would appreciate that very much, two to three questions. There are going to be 50 in an interview. So if I could have them by tomorrow, we could put form and have Labor Council look at them.
All right.
And you will all be receiving your, you know, the backgrounds and the employment applications and the resumes and any other documents that the three individuals are in their interview process.
Okay.
And we've already made them aware that this will be a remote participation platform for the interviews. And we will be sending them the Zoom contact information on Thursday. I know Doug gave me it, probably will confirm everything because Monday's a legal holiday, so the agendas have to be posted on Thursday.
Okay. All right, next thing that I wrote down for old business is Transfer Station, Brush, and White Goods, et cetera. Joe?
Yep, so for next week, I should have dates for you because it's been two weeks. What we're going to, well, what I'd like to see us do, we should have that for next Tuesday. You've got to think about the metal stuff, though, because Town Hall, as of right now, is not open until May 4th. Is that what I heard?
At the very, yeah, the governor, obviously, the governor will be making a decision probably a week before.
Obviously.
Joe, that does then relate to the ability for people to buy the necessary coupon or pass on a per-item basis so that they can drop off their white goods.
Right, that's the only issue I have. I think the bull.
That's a good point, Joe.
The brush, I think we can start at the other facility, like we talked about for two weeks, get that brought down, and then we can start accepting it ourselves. But the metal items, Russ, they're not going to be able to get permits or it's going to be a process. And I don't know how overworked our clerk offices now and how that plays into it until that May 4th date, you know?
Are they still accepting, Joe, the small items like a microwave or a fan or anything like that in the?
I believe if it didn't, if it didn't require a permit, yes, they were accepted.
Okay, okay. All right, it's probably good because I've seen a lot of people, you probably all seen a lot of people out doing yard work, anxious to clean up those yards, especially after the windstorms we've had and the brushes accumulated. So it'll be good that we can tell people there's light at the end of the tunnel.
Yes.
All right, thank you, Joe, for doing all that. The next thing I had was we've had a request from Mass DOT to have a meeting with myself, Attorney Beglan, Mr. Steinhardt, and Mr. Brown from DPW. Carl, that's something that we're going to be setting up for this week, correct?
Oh, yeah, yes, that's something we'll either do on Thursday or Friday. I've asked, I got Randy all the available times that you and Mark and I set. So now he's going to convey that to Mass DOT.
And of course, gentlemen, we all know that's on Congammon Road, where we have a difference of opinion with Mass DOT. And we will see what comes out of that meeting. The next item I had is I had Mr. Steinhardt reach out to the WIP338 promoter and the American Legion concerning permits and leases. I took into consideration the current situation that we're all dealing with. And I tried to be fair with this particular year. And, but I think that there was an email today. I don't know if everybody's seen it, where the Legion had some concerns with what I put out there to them. So I will get back to you if anything changes. Mr. Steinhardt, do you have any old business?
I do, Mr. Chairman. I have an item that was, I had asked Russo Barr, who are designers for the fire station masonry and roof project. As you know, we went through a series of meetings. We chose what we were going to do in terms of the design elements, the roof and repairs. And all along, we've also had Mr. Pennell from the Finance Committee working with us. So the fire chief, myself, the Building Inspector, Buildings and Grounds, and so forth. And once we gave them the go-ahead to do the bidding phase, that necessitated a contract amendment in the first part of their contract where they did all the design work. Well, now we need to approve Amendment Number One, eligible for $10,000 for having done all those bids. Now, as you recall, last meeting I shared with you last Thursday, the filed subtrades came in on the work. The results have been circulated amongst everybody. The general contractors who are interested in that work filed subtrades, they'll put it into their bid, and then they'll submit the bid for the overall project. And it's all done electronically online through a company called Bid Docs Online. So, and that's been very helpful to us so we don't have to circulate plans and Xerox things anymore. So that's done, so they did do that. So under that first phase of the Phase Two, we do owe them for the bidding phase, which is 10,000. And then the remaining amount of that change order, which of course, everything is still within the 300,000 appropriation that Town Meeting did, will make in that borrowing authorization. So the remaining part won't actually happen until there's a decision by Town Meeting to approve the project. If you can bring it to Town Meeting. So the first step is you'll get recommendations. You'll confer with the fire chief and the Building Inspector and others, myself. Decide if you want to put it to the voters. And then if that happens, it would be in the form of a bond. As you know, the estimate was about a million. So to make sure that we cover, you know, the bid and the contingency. And separately, you also wanted to have a clerk in the works. So we need to make sure that we reflect all of those other needed components and what number Town Meeting. And then if Town Meeting approves it, then we go through the process of doing sure to emborrowing, just like we've done with the other projects. And again, you'd be talking about something that would be probably a 20-year note.
Right.
Seem like a huge number, but you know, the lifespan of the roof and the lifespan of the masonry is going to be over 20 years.
Correct. Do you need a vote on anything tonight?
I would like to have a vote by the board authorizing the chair to execute the Contract Amendment Number One with Russo and Barr for $67,950.
I need a motion.
Doug Mogul will make that motion.
Joe Didi, second.
Roll call vote, Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Mogul, aye.
Joe Didi, aye.
It's unanimous. All right, anything else, Mr. Steinhardt?
No, that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Mogul, an old business?
No old business, sir.
Mr. Didi, old business?
No, sir.
Mr. Steinhardt, new business?
No, I think we went over that today with all of the other meeting discussions.
Okay, Mr. Mogul?
No, sir.
Mr. Didi?
No, just remember Congammon Road, those neighbors still aren't happy. Mr. Cowards got issues, as you know. Just remember all that. And of course, any more work they do, we're going to get stuck paying for the police, of course. So it'd be nice to have a little more say in if they need five cops or six cops and if they're going to take all day to do something stupid like they have in the past over there.
Well, I'm going to rely on Town Council, but I, at the same time, I'm going to be extremely vocal as a taxpayer at my displeasure and how this impacts our whole community. And we'll see where we get. And if Attorney Beglan wants to make some sort of recommendation that we go to the next step. that we go to the next step. So we'll see what happens. I'll, um, I'll fill you in at our next meeting.
Sounds good.
All right, if there's nothing else, I'll accept a motion to adjourn.
Is our, when is our next meeting?
It's, uh, next Tuesday at five.
Five o'clock, okay.
Right, remember those? I'm sorry, Joe, I interrupted you. I didn't hear.
No school vacation week, so we don't have to worry about that. We're not going to run into anything.
No, and remember the two questions, uh, by tomorrow.
Yeah, if you want to, three, that's fine.
We don't want to be scolded by anybody. All right, so I need a.
I heard that, Mr. Mr.
Oh, I, oh, I'm sorry. A motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, roll call vote, Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Mogul, aye.
Joe Diddy, aye.
Thank you, gentlemen. Have a gay, uh, good night and be safe, everybody that, uh, tuned in. Be safe.
Thank you.